Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco workshop meeting. The council thanks you for being part of your city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. This this meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV channel one ninety-one on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting videos are available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. All right, with housekeeping out of the way, it's a clerk to please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Here.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Maloney.
Present, and I'll note that Mayor Brahas is excused tonight. And with that, will all you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? All right, with that, we'll move on to item four on the agenda, verbal reports from council members. Any of my fellow council members have something to report tonight? Councilmember Campos.
Keep my comments brief. First off, congratulations to all the Tri-City twenty twenty-three graduates. I had one myself, it was a pretty big weekend, so. Outside of that, we had the BFT Board of Directors meeting, and those meetings continue to impress me on the efficiencies that we've gained. I feel like this group of directors has really worked to try to streamline government, which is hard to do. But we've we've found a way to be efficient and effective, and we are still being good stewards of people's budgets and or taxes and making things happen. So just overall, again, not much has changed from my last report. We're looking at doing things in Broadmore area, Queensgate area, and just really excited to to see those projects move forward. That's all.
Right, thank you for that. Councilmember Milne.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney. Yeah, also a shout out to all the grads there, I had two kids that graduated, so very proud of them. Rachel Milne and Eli Lindberg, so it was a it's a good time and good weekend. And then also last week I did attend a COPA meeting and talking about as far as the overall trip coming up to Kalima and how the budget was looking quite well, and then also talking about doing signs that kind of give more an explanation what COPA is, the partnership, and how the community could benefit from this partnership with the state of Kalima. And of course, it'd be in English and Spanish, so it was a it was a good meeting, so that's uh that was basically my week.
Excellent, thank you. Any other reports from council? All right, seeing none, we'll move right along with the agenda. So move into item five, items for discussion. Item A, discussion of strategic planning for homelessness, drug use, crime, and the effects on the community. And our city attorney, Mr. Eric Ferguson, is up for this. So that is a lot, that's a lot to use, sir.
Yeah, that's quite the title for this item. So essentially, what the goal is with this particular item is there's been quite a few comments recently, there's been lots of things going on. We've obviously discussed the Blake legislation, which has dealt with both possession and public drug use. But there's been lots of comments, both from members of the public who've come in and commented on certain aspects of of I guess this general overall problem with regard to public drug use and homelessness and all the other associated, I guess, issues that come with that. There's been folks that have spoken at length about camping in RVs and parking and potentially sitting and lying ordinance, what would that potentially look like? So really, the goal was to just try to get it started, you know, kind of with the the idea that we would try to maybe narrow or try to identify exactly what some of the issues are. I had promised that we would be able to have one of our prosecutors here this evening, and unfortunately, they were double booked, and so we're but I have them scheduled for a follow-up after we kind of hopefully parse this out a little bit. The I did, I was able to meet with them, both Mike Rio and Jessica Foltz, our prosecutors, on Friday. And really, just kind of wanted to get a sense of, based on a lot of the comments that are being made in the in the community and things that are going on, was there anything, first of all, was there anything in particular that they saw that could very easily improve the situation? And I think it was pretty clear that that wasn't going to be the case, that there wasn't anything that was going to be, for lack of a better expression, a quick wind, be able to alleviate a lot of the concerns with folks, and that we do have a lot of tools that they are utilizing to try to ameliorate some of the concerns or some of the effects of of a lot of what's going on. So it was a little bit of a good news, bad news. The the good news, well, I guess the bad news is there is no silver bullet, and like we we all knew that going in. There's not going to be one thing that we can do that's going to really kind of fix this problem, not just in our community, but statewide and countrywide. So that's that's kind of obvious. But the second thing is, is that what was kind of, I don't want to say inspiring, but it was encouraging, is the fact that they both feel like there are some things that we both have and things that we could do that would certainly improve the situation. So it's while we can't solve the problem, I think the takeaway I had was is while we can't solve the problem, we can certainly do a few things that will make our situation much better than if we did nothing. So it sounds like we can definitely do some of those things. So really, just wanted to, and I'm happy to try to, this is an incredibly complex issue, and and there's multiple different frameworks for enforcement or for legal guidelines that are associated with each of the different components. And I'll try to do my best to give what I can in terms of the kind of the guardrails for each of those issues, if that's helpful. But really, just wanted to get the conversation started and get an idea about what are the the highest priority concerns with regard to kind of this overall issue that seems to keep popping up in different kind of avenues? So anyway, with that, I'm happy to start that conversation. If we, I'm happy to kind of lay out what I think some of those would be, if that would be helpful for council, or if you council would prefer to start the conversation and knows exactly what they want to chat about.
Great, Eric, so I was gonna add, so I guess just to 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 set us. I know we have a limited amount of resources to look into any one of these issues at any one time. Would it be helpful, if not tonight, then somewhere along the line, perhaps after the next session, for council to provide a set of priorities where we we discuss and kind of come to some sort of consensus on, please staff, go look at this first, try to tackle these issues once we know the lay of the land a little better? Like, what what outcome could we best do to make sure that something moves forward and moves forward effectively?
Sure, you know, that's a that's a great point, because there is a lot of energy that has to go into kind of going after each of these particular issues. There's some fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you view it, there's we're getting some feedback from both our State Supreme Court, as well as our Ninth Circuit, U.S. Federal Court of Appeals. And so we do have some guidelines that help define what what we can do, so we won't have to spend a whole lot of time chasing those things down. Is there a lot of open questions with regard to all of those? Absolutely, and are those by any means settled areas of law? When you have judges spending fifty-six pages writing dissents, you can count on those not being settled. So that's those are far from the law of the land for the foreseeable future. So but they are, they are what we are dealing with currently. So but yeah, those being able to prioritize and know exactly what we have, I mean, we do have some things, and that's why the prosecutors will be able to to come and hopefully be able to be a little more helpful in terms of showing or talking about some of the things that we already have in place in terms of our our current ordinances with regard to sleeping on sidewalks downtown and those types of issues, which can help maybe define that. But I really just wanted to kind of get a sense of where do we need to start drilling in and and what are the kind of the burning issues for council and and what would those look like with regard to? I know there's been some comments about the recent ordinance that was passed in Kennewick and the obviously, the the comments from folks that came to the council meeting and talked about parking and and camping on private property. I think somebody even mentioned something about that. So anyway, yeah, happy to figure out what those are.
Great, so if I understand correctly, do you have something that you were going to present to us, where you're going to start the conversation? Or are you looking for us to tell you the hot points today? I understand this is going to be a extended process, or at least what you're talking about here. It's going to take multiple meetings for us to be able to fully start to go through this.
I can, for lack of a better expression, I can kind of give us the greatest hits, and then we talk about those, and then see with how that fits with what we're talking about, and then we can kind of go from there and get a sense of what council's after. So with regard to kind of.
Eric, I do have two lights on here, so first of all, look for nods, is this a good direction to go? And then I think Councilmember Son, I saw you.
Milne was first, it's all wack, because.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious, I know, like when I talked a couple weeks ago about Peanuts Park and the homelessness, I was there. I was curious, just as far as an idea, can we pipe in music that would play continuously, like, you know, that music that you don't want to be, you know, it's fun, but you hear it over and over and over again, you might want to leave. I mean, could we spent so much millions of dollars on that that facility, is that an option that we can play music in the afternoon? Go continuously and and not be, you know, I mean, can the city do that?
Sure, yeah, I'm I'm not sure about to what extent. I think it would be unnecessary, and and maybe if I back up and 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 start with kind of the the biggest kind of issue that that really is the focus of this, is really camping and and sleeping in the right of ways. That's that's one of the things, and that's one of the things that I think you're also kind of mentioning there. And that that kind of leads into a subcategory of camping in city parks and on city property. Right of ways are a little bit of a distinction, but that recently got expanded in a case out of Grants Pass. So there was the the famous or infamous, depending on how you view it, case in Boise, where essentially Boise had an ordinance that prohibited any sleeping or camping anywhere in the city on any right-of-way. And so what the the Ninth Circuit, their their end result to that case was that it was prohibited from being able to, you couldn't prohibit people from being able to do something that they had no other alternative. So if there was no shelter space, you couldn't prohibit them from being able to sleep on those right-of-ways unless you could prove that they had some other alternative. That was a three-judge panel that out of the Ninth Circuit, which is a very small, the smallest you can have reviewed. There was a request for what they refer to as en banc review, which is the entire, I think it's eleven or twelve judge panel. And there that was subsequently denied, and then the U.S. Supreme Court denied certiorari to to actually hear the case. And you never know why that is, right? You don't know if it's because they they don't believe it's a good fact pattern to to analyze in this particular case. So with that being, that is the law of the land in the Ninth Circuit, that's not the law of land in the Tenth Circuit or other places around the United States. So but that's what we're that's what we're stuck with, and so that's kind of the starting point. And so we we start with that and say, okay, well, we know we can't ban sleeping in the right-of-ways citywide at all times. And so once we kind of start back from that, or once we come back from knowing that we can't do that, then we can say, okay, well, are there certain places in the city where we want to ban it at all times? Or do we want to ban it citywide for certain periods of time? So that's where you have a little more flexibility. So to answer your question, not in a roundabout way, but essentially what it comes down to is that might not be something that you would have to do, because you could already ban, and and quite frankly, we already do. I think that's part of the zone downtown that we already ban sleeping, so in the right-of-way. So but it sounds like this is related to a particular park, but it sounds like this is more of a situation that may be during the daytime for folks that are hanging around and and utilizing the park, but not the way the city intended the park to be utilized, is that what I'm?
Yeah, so I mean, like when I was down there, there was just groups of people, some were laying down, and then other ones were smoking something, but it looked like they were really out of it. So I was just saying, you know, if you had music playing nonstop in the afternoon, again, something maybe Spanish or whatever it might be, more, especially if you went over and over again, it might be something to people would enjoy it, but other people wouldn't want to hear it all day long.
Yeah, no, that's that's an interesting concept with regard to yeah, it being something that would potentially be beneficial for folks who are utilizing it in a certain way, but not for folks who are utilizing in a different way. Really, what it comes down to, and I think the takeaway from a lot, well, from all of these types of enforcement mechanisms, enforcement mechanisms, whether they be, you know, camping, sleeping, the panhandling solicitation for aid, what's referred to as solicitation for aid. Any of those types of ordinances, the key is going to be really to make sure that they are content neutral. Because anytime you get into what the what the the actual content of the the act is, then now you're regulating under First Amendment, and so then you have to reach a super high bar to regulate. You have to have what they call strict scrutiny, and that's that's extremely tough to overcome. And so that's not, that's usually not very helpful. So but, you know, obviously, parking, that's, and and people who may be living in parked cars, we can obviously enforce those those parking provisions, but as we've previously talked about, there's a Supreme Court case out of Washington State, Seattle v. Long, which basically says, you can you can cite the vehicle, you can even impound the vehicle, but you can't sell the vehicle to pay the impoundment if somebody doesn't come back to pick it up. Well, guess what? Tow truck drivers don't want to take vehicles that they can't eventually sell, because that's how they get paid for their storage fees. So that is kind of, it's kind of a catch twenty-two. So lots of folks have, including Kennewick, have taken their own city lot in their own space so that they could they could waive those storage fees. They would still have to eat the tow fees, because they don't they don't want to use a city-owned tow truck. They could pay for the towing bill, but then not have to worry about the increased storage fees. But they have, quite frankly, based on my conversation with our prosecutors, City of Kennewick has a city lot, and it's full of quite full of RVs right now. So what those next steps are is to be determined, but they're not on the street.
Okay, well, I guess in conclusion, I'd just like to see maybe something outside the box, maybe the music coming from the peanuts market, obviously, when you have the market, you turn off the music. But the rest of the time in the afternoon, daytime, when you have a lot of people just hanging out there, what looks like a lot of them are up to no good, it'd be good just to play music, have it a little louder, so it's maybe you can't just be having quiet conversations. And and then, as you know, my thoughts also is light up the place, light up the whole downtown with lights. You can't sleep if it's too bright, you don't like that. So I'm just saying, to me, those would be some easier fixes to try to get people out of the downtown core. That's my two cents on all that. Thank you.
Thank you. So just process question for council. I I think if I understood the agenda item here is that Mr. Ferguson was going to give us more of a lay of a land, and if we have some questions about where we want to learn more about, I think that may be more appropriate shape. I'm I'm looking around, I'm looking for a consensus here. That I want to make sure we're well informed, I think, before we start brainstorming a lot of specific solutions. For example, if that was illegal, we would want to nip that in the bud, and otherwise, we're going to be here all night, I think. Not to poo-poo at all your comment there, just in general, I want to make sure we're well structured so we can be efficient. Does that work for the rest of council to kind of prod him for additional information?
So what I think would be most valuable, and this is for me, to visualize it, have like literally a chart that says like a no-fly-fly zone, right? Like, you cannot prohibit X. But here's a subset of X, as you mentioned, you can't prohibit outright sleeping rights away. But you can prohibit out sleeping and rights away during these twelve hours of the day. If if I could see a chart that says where are limitations and where our our authority still sits with this, rather than pitch a bunch of ideas for the next two hours, I'd certainly go home happier. And if we, and I think having your guidance and seeing it again, for me visually, is extremely helpful. And then that way, you're not getting hit with the fly of like, hey, what about this idea? You know, and then I think we could round out that, and I realize that it won't be entirely comprehensive. It'll be, this is how we've taken various case law, this is the ordinance, this is what the law says, here's what we think. And then we could refine that. I I think that'd be the best use of our time, so for me to see a chart like that next week or two, and then workshop it at the next meeting in two weeks, rather than pitch ideas at the wall, and if they don't, you know, they might be wonderful ideas, but to that point, they might not stick at all.
No, that's that's a great point, because even in, you know, the hour conversation that I had with our prosecutors, as as we're going through this, and I'm reflecting, I'm like, well, okay, what does that? At what point does that kick in when it's a public park? And where, when do we, when do we switch over and then what can you do? And they know this stuff like the back of their hand, and they know exactly in their head, because they've got their kind of their mental charts. I think that that could be very helpful for to kind of get that information, you know, in a in a visual format to to assist.
And I've got to believe that somewhere between AWC and what is it, WAPA, the Washington prosecutors, I think that somewhere between those two, or each has its own, I've got to believe, there's some visual somewhere that you're not going to have to recreate the wheel where you can say, hey, look, here's what AWC projects, here's what WAPA projects, the middle of the road for Pasco may be like way here, way here, or direct in the middle or both, right? So I think just again, to conserve resources and.
No, and that, one of the the main takeaways at the very end of our our conversation was the thing that was crystal clear is that the one thing that we lack and that we really need is a comprehensive strategy for what it, what what are the priorities, and what are the solutions we currently have, and what are the what are the things that we need to do solution-wise to get there? But the 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 kind of the ad hoc approach that that unfortunately, we've we didn't intend to get, but we got a lot of help, you know, with other forces acting upon us. But that's what we're stuck with. So that was the the big takeaway from from them was a a comprehensive strategy of priorities that 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 they could have and and be able to say, these are the things, the tools that we currently have. These are the tools we'd like you to be able to provide us downrange. It sounds like that was their their number one request.
Councilmember Brown, do you have something you want to add to this?
Just a quick one, I'm not going to belabor, but I do concur. But I've been consistent with being concerned about the safety. When you say, what is my priority, the safety of it all, because there's more going on with what we're talking about. There's a various number of things that is going on with these individuals that the end result should be. I heard the word resources. I talked about wraparound services, so we can put this in place, but then, no disrespect to anyone, what are we going to do with them? So all the fixes are great, but the end result isn't a part of the comprehensive work. All that we put into this could go this way if there's not, if if we haven't really addressed what's going on, they're not there because they absolutely have chosen that. Something, I believe that something is going on, and if we have programs in place and we work with different professionals that deal with this, that is not in our lane on the clinical side, maybe we are building some some great people in our community to give great testimonies about Pasco and how we do support all facets of how we process in Pasco. So that that's my take there. I know safety is really huge, but the end result with the resources and the support that they need is from housing to medication. We can go down the list, but if that can be a part of the conversation, I love to do the homework, because actually, in some of this report, some sixty-something pages, I do see a lot of what we just talked about in the sixty-something pages, but we need to reduce it a little bit. And I would like to to reduce it, but kind of put it into motion, something of this into motion that says, you know, we're working together on it, but we're not just talking about it. Because the problem is, is a lot of talking, and you're working into three and four months of this. There's something that we can impart into this process that's going to make someone else better. However, we find that out is going to be through getting out there and looking at, yes, the comprehensive work that's going to be put into it to save, if we just save one person, I'm satisfied. So that's my comment, but I know there's homework, so I'm I'm down to do the homework. If if we can do that and bring it all back, like Pete said, I would be excited to bring back and share with you what I have. And when it's all put together, I think it'll just be a win for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Roach.
Mayor Protem, I'm generally in agreement with your suggestion of how to approach this from a process perspective. I think the one thing I'd like to take into account is reading this agenda packet and this particular item. It says, discussion of strategic planning for homelessness, drug use, and crime and the effects on the community. And I think for me, the issue here is the conflation of all three in one. And it sounds like we're talking about the intersection of those three things, when in fact, I think we're talking about three separate issues.
And that is, that's a good, that's a good point, and I think that's what would be helpful to to really narrow the conversation with our prosecutors, because the the thing that's abundantly clear with them on the front lines is when those are crossing or when those are intersecting. I I don't, because I don't have the expertise, I'm not in that world every day, and so I can't really speak to that tonight. But that is something they would definitely have thoughts on and opinions on, and be able to offer ideas about why, where they think those those different issues cross each other and and how we can maybe potentially stop those intersections. So but that was part of the conversation as well.
I appreciate that, and I think that separating those out, because I think there are probably places where it is like a Venn diagram, and there are the the overlap between drug use and crime or drug use and homelessness, it absolutely exists. But I think for our purposes, I'd like to see how we are not punishing, because in my day job, I do have, you know, case managers who encounter people that are the working poor, and they're sheltering in their car for shelter, but they're not necessarily drug use or crime, using, you know, committing crime and 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 a threat to the community. And so I want to be really careful as how I as a council member approach this, because I do not want to unnecessarily label as well as punish or criminalize somebody that is doing the best they can.
Sure, and I think to that point, I think maybe we're we're talking, maybe we're saying the same thing, but there's there's, it's almost like circles, and these circles do have overlap, but that doesn't mean the other part of the circle had to do with the others. So while those are, I I would, I'd be careful to say that those are separate and distinct, and that there's no overlap, because I don't think that is the case from, not in my opinion, I don't think that's what our prosecutors would tell us, and I don't think that's what they're dealing with on a daily basis, but, I mean, I don't want to put words in their mouth. But but at the same time, it doesn't, just because there is an overlap, doesn't mean that there's not a portion of that 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 doesn't have anything to do with the other one.
Absolutely, and so from my perspective, my personal perspective, I really am interested in hearing more about deferred programs. The language that's used in here is mostly encouraged, and I want to know what that means. When would it become mandatory versus encouraged? Is that even an option? Is that something that's in our purview? With the homelessness, what you mentioned before, sheltering in a place that's a car versus an RV versus a public park? I don't know what our our municipal code says, and I think I need that education on what is what the city prosecutor would prosecute on. And then crime, I I would look to the prosecutor for that as well, too, what what is considered criminal? So that's, hopefully, they'll be back next two weeks from now?
Yeah, and and that's mine, that's on me, I I double booked them, so. So I'm sorry, I made that commitment for him and and couldn't get him here.
Okay, well, I'm eager to learn those things. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I was hearing, I'm hearing a little bit of a theme of, don't be, we don't necessarily need to be punitive, we want to solve the problem, but that doesn't mean we need to, we want to punish people, I think, is that a little bit of what you're saying, Councilmember Roach? And there's a lot of amaryat perhaps of causes of that, that we might be, might be able to address and some what we can't. But we don't want to punish someone who is, like you say, doing the best he can, is that fair to say? Councilmember Milne?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll be real quick, I just want to say, I do understand where you're coming from, and I do understand, yeah, you want to help the the less in need, but I also want to remind you that it's the business owners that pay the taxes, I mean, citizens and the business owners that are paying our salaries. So if we let things just go on and on, and it gets worse and worse, there won't be any downtown. I'm just saying, I mean, it's it's very concerning, especially having a business in East Pasco. So I mean, to me, as a business owner, when I'm paying all my money, I want to see a council that does something and comes up with ideas. I wasn't trying to have the whole conversation, but I'm just saying, sometimes it is good to come up with something from a business owner, because we deal with stuff every day, and we're just trying to solve a problem and solve it quickly. And I'm just saying, I mean, these business owners are the ones that are really supporting Pasco in a big sense. So the more commercial we have, the better, more we're going to have to be able to spend on different programs. But we need to, you know, try to revitalize and keep the downtown and other parts of West Pasco where it's not homelessness everywhere. And that's, I'm just trying to say, it's, there's a different perspective when you're a business owner and your money is on the line, and you have people that are hanging out at your store and prohibiting other people from coming into your store. And you have people that are hanging out at your store and prohibiting other people from coming into your store, and, and that's why I was just trying to come up with a unique situation to this, so. Just throwing out a different perspective, that's all, so thank you.
Appreciate that, I don't think anyone's not, I don't think anyone disagrees that there's a problem that needs to be solved.
May I?
Please, Councilmember Roach.
Councilmember Milney, I, I, I agree with you, I think that there are absolute needs to be held accountability for respecting people's property. Um, I guess I wanna look at it at a broader sense besides just people who might be sleeping outside the sidewalk of a business. Uh, because even in my neighborhood, I've seen things like, you know, and. As odd as it sounds, I've seen people who are uh, in the neighborhood, in a, you know, middle class suburban neighborhood who. Husband and wife don't get along, the husband moves out into the R V and is living out there, or uh, an elderly parent who. They don't have enough room in the house, their R V or camper is parked curbside and they're living there permanently. And, you know, going, coming in the house for whatever the needs are, and so wanna think about it broadly just from. Also like a planning commission perspective, because I remember we created a, um, we created a, a um. Code where we were, were policing people for parking at the, at their sidewalk in front of their house. And they were getting in trouble, um, even if it was their vehicle and it was maybe not working for a moment or in time. So there's probably unintended consequences, um, as well as intentional consequences at, in us. Creating these kind of, um, I guess, regulations in our city, so. Just, I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't do that downtown, but thinking about it broadly across the whole city, so.
Well, I'll weigh in just a little bit, um, I mean, obviously downtown has problems, right? I mean, with me being down there for the Pasco Taco Crawl with my wife and some of our other volunteers and sitting there and actively watching people use drugs right next to us. Um, urinating over on the side of a private building and stuff like that, this is not pleasant, this is not okay, this is not how our downtown should be. Um, so we have a myriad of issues. Um, I was reading a study recently that was showing that the, one of the prime indicators, um, you know. Schizophrenia and other severe mental health issues is one of the, one, is one key one, um, financial instability is the other. So I'm really looking forward to seeing the housing action plan to see how we can try to help work on, for example, housing prices. To prevent exactly some of the situations that Councilmember Roach is talking about, or housing affordability. Has simply put a squeeze on somebody, on people to the point where they're living in their car, because they can't afford to be in a house, they're still employed, but they may be bathing at a gym. Um, instead of um, in, in their own personal house, um. These people exist in our community and they exist in part because of the sort of thing, honestly, it was um, pretty eye opening when Director Buckley. Uh, popped open her um, uh, financial report last, um, I think it was last week, um, and you were comparing the, um, you know, um. Tax implications for a house, uh, for a house of, uh, that, uh, a value of four hundred thousand. What, it was like two years ago, we were talking about two hundred thousand, as that, as that, that second sort of price point, four years ago, so we were talking about, this is, this has been. This is really exacerbating the fact that people end up in this, can be, end up in this spiral. Now, once they've gotten to a point where they're a problem, um, and they're creating problematic behaviors, um, that needs to be addressed and they, that's not, that's not okay. They can't be over here impacting our, our downtown and everyone else's quality of life, because they're, they're down on their luck. But we really do need to be looking at a whole myriad of um, solutions here, and some of which we are actively trying to tackle. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Ferguson, one thing that you said that I thought was really interesting was talking about how we can ban, um. Camping or sleeping in certain areas if there is housing available. Um, and we know there's a severe shortage of affordable and um, low income housing um, available in our community. Both private and subsidized, when we're talking about um, truly, you know, um, tru- truly low income subsidized housing. Um, you know, the, the real, real, quote unquote, real affordable housing, um, so we're. We, we, I think we need to ta- we need to have a plan, as you said, um, a strategic plan is how we're gonna tackle this from a. Supply side of things like housing and services, but also from a, yeah, you can't be smoking drugs in our downtown. Um, and you need to find a restroom to go to, and yeah, it's probably not okay for you to be. Um, behaving in some of the ways that you're behaving in our downtown, so we need to resolve all of those. I think from my perspective, some of these are going to be decade long, um, things to try to fix. So very much for me, I guess if I were to, if I were to make a request, I want to see what we can do to help people. Out of the situation they're in for whatever way that needs, whatever resources they need, and that could be, um, and if they're committing criminal acts. That might be, uh, looking at that, that may be jailing, um, if they're looking at, um, you know, if there's housing available for them somewhere and we need to get them out of. Downtown into the housing, um, that's great, but we really do have a, a right now problem that we need to triage. As we're coming up with some of the other solutions, so um, I'd like to see kind of a near term, middle term and long term sort of, sort of act, focus on the planning. And while we're trying to figure out the middle term and long term, I really do want some solutions now as to how we can help, um, to resolve some of these behaviors, so that's. Me personally where, where, where I'm at. I have lots of specifics, uh, Mr. Ferguson, if you wanted me to get into it, but I wanna turn it back over to you and see if there's anything more you can give us in terms of lay of land and information. So we can help start continuing to process this while staff is looking for what forward, what to bring forward to us in a more holistic approach.
No, I think that's great, uh, it's, it's helpful to, uh, think about it in terms of, uh. Knowing exactly what we have and being able to, to look at each of these issues and look at, you know, cuz I, I think that is uh, exactly the takeaway that. That I think I've gotten just through the research of, of these topics as well as uh, my conversations with others. Uh, is that it's not a zero sum game, there's not gonna, you're not gonna be able to arrest people, enough people to, to make this problem go away. And you're not gonna be able to just give enough money out the door, um, to make the problem go away, so. Uh, the, as you, as you stated, I think that's exactly, uh, the issue is where can we make those changes and put those resources? That, that are limited, um, to uh, have the most effect, and I think, um, being able to, as uh, Councilmember Serrano, uh. Just stated, uh, be able to kinda look at that in terms of a, a visual, um. Well, I think that would be really helpful in terms of, and, cuz I think that's also something we could add in, the, uh, we could show how the, you know. This particular code provision, um, enforcement of it won't actually have this effect in that we need to be more focused on. Whatever those uh, housing resources may be or whatever, so I think we'd, being able to see that, we'd be able to see, uh, where. You know, where we're gonna have the effect and where whatever we would do wouldn't actually have, uh, the, the desired outcome, so. Um, but yeah, that is helpful to be able to look at it from that perspective, and I think that, uh, uh, kinda gives us the ability to look at those. That next step of what that visual would look like, and we can work on putting that together and, and when we come back, uh, be able to kinda walk through all those things and, and. Get a good start on it, but it's, uh, this is a part of a very, very long conversation.
Great, I appreciate that, I'm currently looking, and this is something that, um, Councilmember Compos reminds us of, is we have council goals, we have set forward a set of priorities. Um, and I, I know that we've, obviously the Housing Action and Implementation Plan wa- is a, is a portion of the conversation here. Um. But that I think might be, I mean, we have community safety, I'd, um, we certainly talk about, um. Reusing instances of incidences of homelessness by res- by leveraging existing resources such as the newly implemented point one percent mental's, uh, health sales tax. Uh, Resource Navigator Program and other efforts, um, so I think we, we tackle these in a couple different ways, um. What I guess I wanna ask for staff is have we provided the resources and direction to tackle this problem? Or is this something that we need to reprioritize any of our items? And I don't wanna put you on the spot while I answer that right now, but I, I need, I think we need to know, do we need to, um. Direct staff differently other than this conversation, maybe some city manager Lincoln, maybe perhaps you can, uh.
I, I think we can put together a, a, a better comprehensive answer, but uh, likely, I, I, I think. Not because it's not called out in the priorities the, the correct way, but as, as you pointed out, this is something that's a much bigger issue and. I, I think that housing is only a portion of it, as was also highlighted tonight, so I, I think at least spelling it out as a more clear. Immediate priority that's going to be on there for a while, uh, uh, articulating that better for the public as well, I think is, uh, something that would. Benefit this council, future councils and, and staff as well.
And, and to that point, uh, one of the things that you're gonna have to do, uh, very quickly, uh, is to decide, uh, how you want to, uh, attempt to. Or if you want to attempt to implement the, uh, the most recent, uh, legislation, uh, here locally, right? So that's gonna be, that's gonna be a big decision and how you implement that, um, that's something also our prosecutors have some, uh, very specific ideas about what they would prefer. Uh, but that will be something that can be the, kind of the short term triage, uh, thing that will need to happen, because, uh. Without that, a lot of the other issues are gonna be non starters, because, uh, you're not gonna have that already kind of on the books, uh, uh, as your other backstop, so. Um, that'll be one of the first things that comes in the next, uh, month.
Appreciate that, um, I know Chief Gear had been laying, putting together a, um, and talking a lot about the Resource Navigator Program, even our liaison for the Mental Health Program. Is that something as part of this or separately from this that we could get an update on, um, what is happening with the mental health services in the community? Because I, I feel ill informed, I mostly read about it in the paper about what the counties have chosen to do next, um, and I'd like to be a more active member of that.
Yeah, we can certainly do that, I know, I, I'm sitting in, Chief Gear is still serving on that committee. As a representative for the Franklin County Fire Agencies, so he's still actively engaged in that. Uh, and working with him on those kind of things, so yeah, we can find out about doing a presentation again, uh, to you guys.
Great, and the, the other, and I apologize for, for speaking so much right now, but, um, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, perhaps you could lay out again where, where in terms of the housing. In, action and implementation plan, um, what that timeframe looks like, if you could get that in front of us, I think that would help too. Those seem to be two partial underpinnings to this in addition to the work that the prosecutors, uh, will be helping.
Yep, certainly, uh, the Housing Action Plan is scheduled for public hearings in July and August, Planning Commission, we're hoping for a recommendation. Uh, in August, Planning Commission, that'll be in front of council, uh, soon after.
Excellent. All right, uh, Mr. Ferguson, is there anything else you'd like to share with us on this topic of tonight?
Uh, no, just that it, um, is, uh, it's overwhelming, I mean, it's a, it's a lot, you start to, to get into it and then you quickly. Um, you know, it's not gonna be, uh, something, I mean, I'm, I'm stating the obvious that it's, it's obviously something that's, uh, you know, very multifaceted, so. Um, and the legal aspect of that will only be, you know, we can provide you, uh, myself and, and both our prosecutors can provide you the, kind of the legal framework for. Uh, how you would go about doing some of these things, but a- as you s- have highlighted, there's gonna be a whole other, um. List of things that could contribute to that, but it was, uh, quite frankly, I was, uh, uh, I was pleasantly surprised, I thought, uh. The, I would thought it would be much more, um, uh, discouraged after, uh, my meeting with our prosecutors that, um, that there were things that they could, uh. That they would not be as helpful, but, uh, yeah, they seemed to, to, uh, really be able to identify some of the areas where they feel like they can. Have some, some small gains to help that end of the spectrum, uh, with regard to the other things, obviously that's, uh, other departments, but, um. But yeah, so there are some things we can do to improve our situation.
Excellent, right, uh, any other feedback for, from council to staff at this time? All right, seeing none, this is beginning of a conversation, not an end of one, but it'll be the end of it tonight, so, uh, with that, move on to item B. Resolution lease agreement for the readiness center for, with the Washington State Military Department, uh, Chief Roski.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, council members, um, the army, the, the. Washington State Military Department's Army Readiness Center located at First and Clark Street, we've used that facility in a. Um, in a handshake, uh, partnership for, uh, probably ten or fifteen years or, or longer. But as the, uh, the, the requirements by recent legislation mandated for additional training of our staff. Our partnership with the state on a regional police academy, um, we just have outgrown our training building. Of where we are and the need to expand that in a more formal role rather than just an occasional ad hoc use of the building. Um, has come to fruition now, and so we've entered, or, or we've, we've got a, a lease agreement over the next four years in front of you. That I think will help, um, help us better, uh, train, keep, keep our officers better trained. And, and meet the mandatory requirements and continue to fulfill our partnership with the, with the state. In the, uh, in, in the training requirement that we have, so it, it's a pretty basic contract. Legal has reviewed that for your review, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on it.
Great, and if I understand correctly, this is one of the kitty corner from our, um, from where the, uh, um, basic law enforcement academy is being held, right, the one.
Correct, yeah, in the same, cu- across the street, you're right.
Great, thank you, uh, any, uh, questions or comments from council? I'm seeing none, I, it sounds like, uh, everyone's in agreement on this one, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to the end of our, our items for discussion, um, so we'll move on to miscellaneous discussion and, uh, City Manager Lincoln, uh. Why don't you go ahead and kick us off?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council, uh, a few, few brief items, uh, today at the Pasco Chamber, Pasco Chamber Luncheon. Uh, we had a roundtable discussion, uh, just kinda kicking off the, uh, community profile that our, uh, consultants working on the economic development. Strategic plan has put together, it was, uh, it's sort of toe in the water, um, surveying some of the attendees. Um, but in general, the, the feedback I thought was very positive as far as where the, the economy setting for the city. Um, the, the next step for that process is going to be, uh, working more with the, the technical side with staff and doing a more deep dive. So as soon as there's more of a formal update, we'll make sure that we can get that to council, um, I don't know if you had anything to add, Jacob, okay? Uh, reminder that Saturday, June seventeenth, we've got our Juneteenth celebration at Kurtzman Park from twelve to six P M. Uh, including a proclamation to celebrate the Kurtzman Park National Historic Designation, so that'll be a, a, a fun event to attend. Uh, also on Saturday, June seventeenth, or at two P M, we've got the Fire Recruit Academy, uh, graduation that'll be held at Chihuahua High School. Um, one more, uh, item, we've got, uh, Debbie has a quick update on the boards and commissions and I've got a couple more.
Great, thank you, um, so last week you had asked about the vacancies on the boards and commissions and, and some outdated webpages. So all the webpages have been updated and all of the term information has been corrected, so, um, that's done. And we now have, um, we still have three positions on the Arts and, um, Culture Commission. Two of them are for art professionals and we have no candidates for them, because they don't meet the qualifications. We had, um, three applications for the youth representative, and unfortunately I've only been able to contact and, um, get. Updated information from one of the candidates who is interested, so I'll be bringing that to the subcommittee. Uh, we also have, uh, two vacancies due to, um, one recent removal. And that's on the, uh, civics, uh, civic service commission, and that particular board, um, the city manager. Appoints that person and then it, um, council confirms, so we're gonna be putting, uh, an add out for that, that position. And then the other position that, uh, recently vacated was due to a re- resignation of a long term member, but she felt her. Her time was, um, up on that, so she has left and we have a vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board now. Position number one, and that term expires in February two thousand twenty six, so it's a fairly long term still. And then, um, lastly, the Pasco Public Facilities District Board, um, we have an upcoming term, uh, vacancy on that one. And we're gonna be, um, posting that, and that will be for, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, for a four year period. And, um, it's currently, uh, placed with, uh, Carolyn Bowdish is that person. So I've got information on how to apply for a board and commission, you can reach out to the city clerk's office if you have any questions, but we welcome. Um, applications, most of them, with the exception of the arts professional, should have, um, be a city of Pasco resident. And then, uh, lastly, the Housing Authority Board of, uh, the City of Pasco and Franklin County. They have asked that, uh, Brian Griffith be reappointed, he's currently acting as their chair or has been their chair. So, um, that will be going to the mayor and asking for that, and likely will be on next week's agenda if all goes well, so, that's it.
Great, appreciate that update, um, and there's a, um, I believe also for the, um. Hubble Advisory Board, I believe there's one position that is appointed by the board that needs to be a resident of the county. Uh, you know, including the city of Pasco, so I think there might be one position there, um, Mr. Lincoln, do you recall, or Mr. Rice, do you recall? In our meeting, we, we discussed this, but I don't remember the details.
I don't either, that's, that's what I recall as well, is that, I, I, and I think typically it's one that the county had tried to fill, but that doesn't mean we can't help get the word out.
Okay, appreciate that.
Couple other quick items if I may, uh, also a reminder to council that the A W C Annual Conference is next week in Spokane. Uh, from Tuesday to, to Friday, I believe that, uh, right now it's Mayor Protem and myself that are planning on attending that, but if there's anyone who's interested. We can get you registered and, and we'll, we'll be happy to have you up there, um, also, uh, wanted to ask council. If they were interested in canceling the meeting on July third, if you are, we can put it on next week's agenda as an item.
I'm seeing nods around the table about July third.
Yeah.
I'm seeing unanimous nods around the table.
Twisting arms, understood.
And I'm thinking real hard, I think Blanche is nodding as well, so.
And thank you, that's what I have for updates.
I appreciate that. Um Councilman Brown.
Yes, just uh thank you, Protem Maloney. Um just a point of clarification on the word communication. When it comes to regard to this guy, Councilman Brown. So in the newspaper, um there was, I'm gonna take it as a quote. Looks like on behalf of myself that I was, I was or I am somehow displeased with. The services or the staff and their output for the city of Pasco, which is. Far from being correct. Um I did speak with the Tri-City Herald. Um I haven't looked at it, but it seems to have been updated and it was quoted from last week that I'm. I'm somewhat disappointed because the staff is not transparent and this is on purpose. So I know the camera's on. This is on purpose because transparency is this clarity, so it's taken out of context. Transparency is sometime we get documents that are so jam-packed. Um sometime it takes more time to study it or to be more clear about it or a few minutes to ask a few questions. This was taken way out of the box and out of context and I was not happy about that and I really appreciated being notified about that. And that one correction has been made. So to the staff of Pasco, I apologize for the confusion. But it's not how I speak. That is not any part of the content of my character. If I have something to say, I'll go directly to the source. So this is how I represent Pasco, especially District Three. I'm very clear and very precise. I am not calculated. I'm just direct. So I did not appreciate that. I enjoy the staff and I'm saying it publicly. Here in the city of Pasco, we have wonderful staff members. That will just do exactly what we asked them to do and sometime if not more, under the current conditions that they're under, they're working a overload. So I would never speak ill of this staff and I do not appreciate being misquoted. So we will handle that in different ways going forward, so that doesn't happen again. And I was also. Um charged with something a few meetings back and I don't have the dates. Um it just sparked recollection to me. I want to be clear again. It was noted in one of our past meetings during public comment that myself, Councilman Brown. And Mayor Barajas also chastised the staff for not being on point. That is yet again gross, misgrossed communication and that never happened. If there's any concern with that, I've been provided with a phone number. I've been provided with a city email. I am more than adequate and ready to answer any questions or comments, but do not misquote me and do not represent me. I can do that on my own. So I'm very proud of the city of Pasco. I stand firm on what I say. I do not backpedal. I am proud of the city manager that we have. I'm proud of the staff that we have and I want Pasco to know that whatever I say. Is a great benefit and a blessing to the city. So I just wanted to make that clear during this comment and I appreciate you all listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Uh Councilman Mill.
Uh thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to kind of give a big shout out. I see my daughter who came all the way from Hickam Air Force Base, who serves in the U S Air Force. So it's not often you get a a local hero that uh serving our great nation and uh. And then a kudos to my wife. It's not often you see Councilman's uh wife show up for a council meeting. I know these aren't the the most riveting things, but I just wanted to say thank you as well. It meant a lot to me, so thank you both for showing up.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Uh Councilman Campos.
Uh thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney. I I wanna echo Councilman Brown's sentiment about the city staff in Pasco. You know, they. Will take something and hit the ground running. Um I've had a thorn in my side for many years with Lewis Street entrance. Under the highway. Um I just forwarded an email to, you know, city manager Lincoln and his staff and. I got a resolution I think that I'm I'm comfortable with and I again to echo Councilman Brown's, these guys are phenomenal. Uh you can't ask for a better staff, so just again, thank you guys.
Just just I forgot and for Eric at the um Tri-City Herald, um I do wanna commend him. Very gracious, very respectful and making this correction and he did it during conversation, so that was. That was pretty cool. I didn't even get to see the update, but he was on it very quickly, so shout out to Eric and I appreciate him. Having that very um frank conversation with me is what it was. Thank you.
Alright, thank you all very much for for those comments. Um real quick, I do wanna uh mention um. Um and I think we've all kind of seen this is that there's been, the city has been putting out some great communications that are much more informative, providing really good. Detailed information out there for people to be able to see in a summary form what is actually happening. I know there's a lot of misinformation out there. Um a lot of people are 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 poorly informed about what's actually going on or relying off of rumors. Um and so I I really appreciate those those ways of trying to communicate more thoroughly and more directly. In a way that um hopefully will help um dispel some of the the negative rumors we get, especially about Pasco and um who we are and and really who we're not. So really appreciate those and how those have been coming along. Uh the other thing I'd note is that um I know we had some com- comments and confusion. Um some concerns about the um the animal shelter. I appreciate staff pulling that together. Hopefully it's been also provided to some of the uh the folks who are very much engaged in the shelter. From a volunteer perspective and hopefully can answer some of their questions well, um and again, continue to work through that. But on that vein, I think last week I believe we had um an A C O meeting. Um is is that something that? It it has the attendance gone up? We've gone some some strides to invite people to that? Do we know if people are showing up from the public?
Uh yeah, I'd say we had about twenty, twenty-four people in attendance and it went well.
Are we receiving better input and communications from and with the folks that are showing up?
Um we did have a couple speakers this week, but we've also improved our presentation uh through the A C A Board, so they have a bit more information to view and follow along. So I think that minimizes the questions, opens up the transparency a bit more. So I think we're answering those questions they may have had ahead of time.
Okay, great. I really appreciate that because that's been a huge concern for this community and um I'm glad that we're we're being proactive and trying to use the the mechanism. If they're engaging in a uh with us and we're engaging back with them, I hope we can um keep stay on the same page instead of being at a spot where we um are having. You know, much more public um discussions when than um than functional working discussions. So thank you. Appreciate that. Alright, with that, I don't see any other lights on, so we'll go ahead and move on from from miscellaneous council discussion and we do have need for executive session. Uh we have discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per R C W forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one I uh for twenty minutes. Um so it is seven fifty-eight and so we'll make an e- um a nice even number and say in eight twenty, we'll be back in these chambers. Thank you.
And council will be extending our executive session for five more minutes to eight thirty one.
And with that, this council is back from executive session and with no other items in front of us on our agenda, we are, this meeting is now concluded. Thank you all.